All right, let's call to order the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. It stays Tuesday, July 15th. We're meeting in the Supervisor's Executive Conference Room on Melody Lane. Pursuant to ARIS 38431.2H, the public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend either in person via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. District one, District two, and District three. Antonori is here. All supervisors are present and in person, and we actually have our esteemed county treasurer with us here today, as well as Ms. Gilman, Mr. Casey, and Ms. Nolanheim. I'll go to Ms. Gilman to kick this off and explain what we're about to do.
Sure. So I have a short presentation. We can go through the various committees that the board members belong to and membership dues that we pay under the supervisor's budget. Most of these committees are structured in with the vein of improving overall county governance by putting the county at the table for conversations and strategy planning and policymaking. So, but we'll go through these, and if there's any that the board has not participated in or has not felt strongly about, we can have a discussion about that. Laura Gilman.
All right.
I'm just getting this PowerPoint to cooperate a little bit.
Thank you.
There you go.
Assuming, since our treasurer's here, Trey Wick is concerned about AAC.
AIC.
Okay, so.
Those are off the top, and I'll let her make her comments if you like, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Treasurer.
Well, I would actually like to ask you guys to go ahead and continue participation. We are 100% state with NACO, and there's over 2,000 counties in the country. And I have been participating, the representative to NACO, here in NACO, for the last 11 years. During that, well, AECO first of all, Arizona Association of Counties, that they represent all of the elected officials. You guys can participate in that as well as CSA, but we have had other supervisors that are actually in AECO as well as CSA. But AECO acts as a lobbyist for us. That's their primary function, and they keep on top of all the, I don't want to say goofy, but that word that's in my head, legislation that comes through that affects different county offices, and they make us aware. We actually, a lot of the electeds go and lobby the legislature to let them know that what they're presenting in a bill, the unintended consequences can be catastrophic. We've had several dozen issues like that. Every year, we have several dozen. But I know from your experience, Mr. Antonori, that you know that lobbyists are very expensive.
Yeah.
And what we pay in dues to AECO for them to help represent us in the legislature is very minimal compared to, like, I don't know.
Yeah.
In very ends representing us on one issue, it would be 10 times what we actually pay in dues. I asked the AECO rep for Cochise County, I have been past president of AECO, past vice. I have been on the LPC for 10 years, Legislative Policy Committee. Let's see, I also, because I participate in NACO for Cochise County, that is a national level lobbyist issue, and so we're just talking about AOC's special legislation that he's proposing. That would be another issue that you could get NACO's backing with. Some of the issues that I have worked on with NACO are border issues, H2A housing, northernly flowing effluence, water issues, health, SRS, wildland fires, immigration, border security. I also work with WIR, which is the western interstate region of NACO, and I'm dealt with mining, tourism, public lands, housing, wildland fires. And I've also been a presenter at NACO for finance issues and cash handling. So I'm just, I think it would be in the county's best interest to continue with these memberships. You can see they do represent us in a bigger realm. On the H2A housing, I actually had to go head to head with a lady from Colorado that did not understand that a lot of the immigrant workers that are legal immigrant workers that come across the borders to work in Yuma, they don't want to live in housing in the United States. They like to go home every night. But because of the way the statute is written, they have, the farmers have to provide housing for the workers that come over on a annual basis. And it's not a necessary expense for Yuma because that's not what their workers prefer. But this woman from Colorado is like, that's ridiculous. They have to, you need to take care of these people in the best possible way. They don't have a border. They don't have micro workers. They don't have the option of people going home overnight. So getting our particular regions' issues from the national audience is very important. And so that's, if you have questions, when we know, I'd be happy to answer them.
Would you like to tell us more about the subject of unintended consequences that have to do with your experience?
Well, all right, there, one of our particular area representatives chose to believe a group that was a specific legal foundation that our entire back tax scheme, the way that we collect back taxes, was horrible and illegal, and we should change the entire process because it's unfair, and we confiscate property, and we go and kick people out of their homes. And literally, one of our legislators bought into that and was, they backed the bill to completely gut the entire back tax process. I've actually been to other states to help them with their legislation to become more like us, because, to be honest with you, I feel that our back tax process is so fair that it is probably one of the best models in the entire country. Because you basically have five years to catch up your taxes before anything bad could happen to your property. You have the opportunity to take out a loan, go from your friends, make payments, accept payments. But the way that they wanted to change it was that we would be representing the county as basically a realtor. We would hold the properties as our inventory, and we would actually do sales on their property. I am not a realtor, nor would I play one on TV, nor do I want to. I collect taxes. That is my function. And for them to try and legislate a complete change to make us more like, their big example was Detroit.
Just like Sierra Vista.
Yeah. But one of our legislators actually believed that, and I meant our region, our particular area, thought, that's a great idea, and because they are also a realtor, that makes perfect sense, because we would have to contract with the realtor to actually do that function. And it's like, no, 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 no. You know, you need to understand the whole process of tax collection to actually see how good our process is without going the baby out with bathwater.
Okay, I got another question.
Okay.
Which is, is it, is it good or bad for somebody to be able to pay another person's property tax in reference to squatters occupying the property? And what I'm talking about is, let's see, street begins with an H.
Yeah.
Begins with an H. Pargas, there you go, thinking.
Can't imagine why I would know that word. My personal opinion.
Or what's the fix?
Well, the fix is, basically, anybody can pay anybody's taxes that wants to. It becomes a gift. If you don't buy the lien, then it's not an investment, it is a gift. So say I came in and I decided that, you know, I mean Sharon just won't spend all of her money on T-Move, and she's like, I can't pay my taxes. And I'm like, well, you know, I've been paying off at Amazon for all paid taxes. It's a gift at that point. If I wait until her taxes become delinquent and go through the tax lien sale, then I own the certificate and it becomes an investment, and then there would be a foreclosure issue. But yeah, there is nothing to preclude anyone from paying taxes on someone else's property.
Okay. So what happened with that? Somebody paid somebody's taxes and then claimed they owned the property?
No, somebody paid somebody else's taxes, and whoever was like shirttail relatives or something like that squatted on the property, and probably still is.
Good.
There's not much that my office could do about something like that. Yeah, that would be more of an ownership issue, unfortunately.
Oh, then the other thing is, like, so totally counterintuitive is somebody that's dead can own property.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, very strange.
Their estate owns it. Anyways, Ms. Gilman.
Does AECO get involved in any kind of port of entry or, you know, trade, international trade, anything that has to do with, like, say, importing, exporting, anything like that?
Not really. Their main function is to work on legislation. That is pretty much what I see their vision as. I mean, they do represent all elected officials in whatever capacity we request of them.
Because you were mentioning a lot of different issues that were involved, right?
That's national.
That's national. So, but this would be with the internet, with the border. So they're into border security. What other issues are they in that relate to the border? Rural health, would they be into, like, healthcare, like, we were trying to establish a hospital, something like that, mental health?
Okay. I would say there's several subcommittees within each group.
Right. I'm on Ag and Roll.
You're on the Ag and Roll?
Yeah, I've been for 11 years. And yeah, I've worked on some pretty heavy issues. I know when you think, you know, like, northernly flowing effluence, it's like when Lad Ranch was having their issue, I actually was involved to coordinate with the national level for some of the water funding that did come to the county. I worked really a lot with Representative from San Diego because they were actually having problems with Farnado Island because of the northernly flowing effluence. They couldn't even do their seal training in the bay because of northernly flowing effluence. So it's border all the way across, bottom and the top.
So Ag and Roll, what are some of the issues on Ag that you've been, do you know, like, cattle issues?
Water lands, grazing leases, wildland fires, how grazing leases can affect positively or negatively, the wildland fires themselves, forest management. Oh, gosh.
Do they get into, like, cattle and grazing and benefits they do?
I mean, it's no secret I have a heartburn with AECO over what happened in 2020.
What's that?
So they, they were individuals without the authority of this board going to members of the legislature to change statute, particularly to get rid of precinct commitment elections for political reasons.
Right.
That was not run by the Board of Supervisors, which, under Title 11, were the guys that are in charge of technically elections in this county.
Right.
And nobody ever talked to them about it. I understand where you're coming from, anything related to your office? I get it, you know, dealing with tax collection and issues regarding property, and you and Phil that need to go and deal with that and lobby the legislature to fix those issues, I'm okay with that. My only heartburn is, is we have, basically, when you say all county sharing, does that mean anybody from the county can go to this thing, or any elected official?
Elected officials, yes.
So then how did our former elections director have the authority to influence?
Well, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a separate group for elections.
Yeah, it was like, she was a president of the Election Directors Association or whatever.
They can be, but that elections directors are only affiliate members. They're not actual.
But they evidently had enough juice to get a member of the legislature to introduce a bill.
I mean, I'm also a president of ACTA, which we have no dues, so this isn't an issue. But it's the Arizona County Treasurers Association, and I also work on legislation.
You guys are elected. That's the point, though. That's what I'm getting at. So you have that authority under your constitutional office.
And I would say, I think the message has been sent and understood by any, by the appointed offices, the non-elected directors, I should say, the appointed departments, that any participation in legislation needs to be run through the Board of Supervisors first. So we've handled that internally.
Is there something that's stated that says that? Not just assumed that everyone knows that?
I can sort of work on a policy to put that into.
I mean, with deference to our other, what are, determines role officers, right? So you have.
We do have some policy I can amend.
Autonomy as an elected official in the county regarding her duties as treasurer, I get that. And then, you know, sheriff has autonomy in his duties, and the recorder has autonomy. There are other impacts, though, that affect the county as a whole, that I'm just concerned with anybody being able to be up there lobbying with a group or an organization or a subcommittee or whatever, like, some of these other groups up there to go get legislation inserted and whatnot without informing the board.
Mr. Crowe. Yeah, Mr. Crowe, if I may, just briefly. With a lot of these, they're going to fall into the same category that I have observed, where you have people that are elected officials, and they are part of XYZ organization, and they have a budget of tax money, but they're not elected to that. They might be elected officials, but they're not elected to CEGO.
I got it, but I mean.
There's some things, you know.
So there's the old saying, you know, if you're not on the table, you're on, not at the table, you're on the menu, right? So having someone there to keep us up to speed on what's going on and inform us could be helpful, right? Having someone there that is undermining and doing something without us knowing or sneaking, trying to sneak stuff through is not helpful, right? But if there's a way that we can ensure everybody stays in their lane, so to speak, and that's not a problem.
Were you talking about an appointee?
I'm talking, well, again, even if.
Process.
Not that you would, I'm just saying, even, let's say Ms. Trey Wick goes up there and she, she wants to fix something, and it's related to zoning, let's say, and in order to fix this, she's got to get something in the statute changed regarding zoning, and she doesn't tell us, and she lobbies, I'm just, I'm not, and then she lobbies through this subcommittee of AECO to change the, change the, what do you mean, you can't?
Because, all right, that's the other part of.
But AECO takes input from everybody, and then they formulate policy that they then feed to members of the legislature, who then turn that into.
Before that happens, it goes to the LPC, the Legislative Policy Committee, which is made up of members of each of the affiliates, which are the assessors, the treasurers, the board, the sheriff's office, the.
School superintendent.
School superintendent. They all have a representative on the LPC. And it, hang on, let me finish the explanation. So all legislation that comes through that has an effect on county office, regardless of what office it is, oh, county attorneys are in there too. But it comes to the LPC. The LPC decides whether AECO is going to represent them on any of this legislation. Then, once the LPC comes up with the legislation they would like AECO to represent them on, then that is presented to the Board of AECO, and they decide from there, yes, these are okay, these are things that we support.
So how did, in March, in March of 2020, how did this happen then? How did, somehow, someone get to Vince Leach, Senator Leach at the time, and get him in March to introduce a bill that would eliminate the election of precinct commitment?
I.
And nobody, did you ever read, you didn't hear until it was after the fact, when the bill got dropped?
LPC.
People started seeing the, seeing.
Ultimately, that was a fault of the legislature. They didn't read it.
But it still got to them. Someone wrote the legislation and fed it to him and got him to introduce the legislation.
That could have been Gavin Gibson or Cool.
Okay, question, but this is my question.
Legislation.
But it came from AECO. It was, I 100% know for a fact it came from AECO.
What you're talking about, I think the question is the process, how do we get assured that the Board of Supervisors would know about anything that your Board of AECO would do? And if you are there, Trey, you, Jackie Clay, the sheriff, then why wouldn't you guys tell us about it?
I'd be happy to.
But I mean, that's the way it should be, right? Because.
Yeah, but you guys also participate in CSA. You also have to seem.
But I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. You're asking, we can all go to jail for things that get passed because we don't know about it, and if there's not a flow of information that even if you said this legislative committee decides and then goes to the board, and you have Sheriff Daniels, you have Jackie Clay, and they decide that the process isn't then to say, hey, Board of Supervisors, FYI, these are some of the policies that the Legislative Policy Committee and the Board has decided that we want legislation on. I mean, I think that is your question too, right?
Yeah, so she's got, under Title 11, certain authorities, right? We've got certain authorities.
Title 48.
Right, right. I mean, if it's, if it's something that's specifically related to her office that doesn't have impact, I don't have any heartburn with her or any role officer.
But wouldn't you want to know, I would want to know what AECO decided to take to the legislation.
Yeah, that, that's.
That's what I'm saying.
Any, any proposed legislation should somehow make it back to us before.
Say CSA does work closely with AECO, they're in.
But they, when I talk to them, they didn't know it either, though. They had no idea.
And I would know how that went to.
That was, it was such a sneaky hole.
Yeah, but I mean.
The question is, how can we avoid it, right? How can we avoid those kind of things going forward?
Well, a lot of people, a lot of people were.
You got to tell your participation is going to be your.
Yeah, yeah, a lot, a lot of people.
You guys are participating, right? You guys are participating, so wouldn't it be a good, like, the flow of information should come back?
I'm not being a send you.
No, but I, it's, I'm not saying being, you know, like, going after you. I'm just saying, the process.
That would be a bad.
Yeah. And it would be a bad move both ways, okay? But the process is what we're talking about. There's got to be a process where information flows back. And quite frankly, that's what I think has been a big issue with the Board of Supervisors, is there has not been that information that has freely come back to us that, you know, so a lot of things I've seen that's happened in the past is because boss didn't know anything about it, and they should at least have an idea. So whether it's a process that Sharon tells us, or that you report back to us, or whatever, you know, the representatives, like, whoever's on that board, there should be following communication, and I don't necessarily think that boss has to be on it to make sure that we know about it. I think that's what I'm trying to say.
I'm trying to think this.
Depends on if they're handled publicly.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want to hamper the other elected officials of the county in their ability to get stuff fixed on their, behalf of their office. That, I get that, right? They have to have, we have CSA to do our stuff for us, right?
But you can also participate in AECO. AECO is for.
No, I know we can't, I know. We're, we're, there's three of us, and there's like.
They actually were one organization until they split. But they're in the same building in, yeah.
Yeah.
They're in.
I mean, I didn't even know I was on it, but I'm, you're on it. I mean, we could participate, see, I don't get anything from them.
I'd like to go back to your remark that if you're not at the table, then you're on the menu.
Yeah, yeah.
And so you have this, this situation where, in, just with regard to the sprinkle of water, all that kind of stuff, where the feds presumably invite you in to collaborate, cooperate, and coordinate, okay? However, your place at the table is ultimately dependent on what I believe is the golden rule, which is whoever has the gold makes the rules, and that's going to be the federal government, and the only way to handle that is not collaborate, cooperate, coordinate, it is to fight them.
Well, I wouldn't disagree, and we're going to get to that in a little bit, but I'm back to what we're talking about here, is we have a lobbying mechanism that we've used this year quite significantly, which is CSA to help us stop stuff and fix stuff that was going on that was going to directly affect the county. The other elected officials in the county need a mechanism as well, where they can influence legislation to, as long as it's, again, relative to their office, I, again, I don't see any issue why they shouldn't have that mechanism. The question is, you know, do we.
How many associations do we need?
Well, yeah, that's, that's, well, there's a reason they broke off.
Right.
Right, from CSA.
Right, because they found themselves to have divergent program over desires and so on.
So to clarify, the dues, that $19,600 is for Kathy's dues, Phil's dues, it's all.
It covers all, yeah. So it's like four grand apiece.
It's not just the Board of Supervisors' dues, it's the umbrella dues for the whole county.
So we were to show up, we would pay another $4,000?
No.
No.
It's based on the unpopulation of the county.
Yeah. So anybody, anybody can go. So, again, I don't want to, I don't want to take our role officers out of the, so I don't.
Could we just, I would go for, I just, is there a way that, you know, when legislation gets on or whatever AECO presents to the legislature, would we be able to know about it? Could there be just, instead of me asking?
LPC, their LPC sends out email newsletters, updates, so I can make sure you're on that list.
Because I sure haven't gotten anything that has to do with AECO, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, 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 I'm, we can't vote on this here, obviously, right? But we could, we could discuss it. I mean, I, I could see the utility of the role officers to have access to the ability to fix stuff. I mean, I don't know why they broke off from CSA, because I guess CSA has the word S in it.
I honestly don't remember.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember either. I don't remember, I don't remember either.
Yeah.
And it isn't in the big picture things, a whole ton of money. I mean, it's 19 grand, and it basically covers, how many counties we got? The treasurer, the recorder, sheriff.
Superintendent.
Superintendent, the, the.
Assessor.
The attorney.
Attorney, the assessor.
And the assessor, that's six. And then the three of us, all right, it's nine, so nine into.
No, it's not very.
Twenty.
I guess it's just.
Oh, the clerk, yeah, the clerk, the clerk, so 10.
So I guess it's just making sure that.
It's basically two grand in office.
We get.
Is what it comes out to.
Sounds like improved communication.
Yeah.
Yeah. And partnership through with our other elected officials to know what's happening.
So that, that would be, so like, the, so the CSA's got the Legislative Policy Committee as well, right? Where they do the bill rundown. If somebody can give us that every time AECO does their.
They send that out as well, and then.
Yeah, I just don't get it.
And sometimes CSA will mention.
No.
CSA will mention in their LPC meetings if AECO is cosponsoring or if AECO is running a post to something that CSA is.
It's still, I think you need to get, I think we need the flow of information.
Just to get us the, point out how to get us the emails from, here's what we're up to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Before they send it to the legislature.
Yeah. Not like, oh, this is already passed. Not like, oh, this is already passed.
Comes the other way around, because most of the time, the stuff that comes to the LPC is a bit. And then we have to decide do we fight this, do we.
The way, the way this went down didn't go that way, though, it went the other way.
But I still, I have no idea who went to Mr. Leach or how that went, you know? It did not come through the LPC, it did not, because I was on the LPC in 2020. And I can guarantee you that that was never part of our platform.
I, I got you, but somehow it did make it to somebody to, on the behalf of ACO. I mean, Vince was adamant that that's where he got it from.
So does election issues come under ACO, you're saying?
Yeah, a lot of election issues, because of the recorders, a lot of them. And then pan- translate the election directors, some counties have election directors.
We're specifically under Title 11 in charge of elections in the county.
Exactly.
I mean, it's just, it's just.
That's just something that should just happen without even asking, we find out what's going on and be included. So I'm with you, I mean, I don't want to.
Let's do this, again, you know, we don't, I don't want to take away the mechanism to have a voice to influence things that could benefit their office, right? So, so we just need to get, anything that's going up to come to us somehow.
That's very doable. I can talk to, to both organizations, CSA and ACO, and make sure you're on.
Now, back, let's go to the NACO guys. So what, what, I, I know what you were talking about, I just, I just don't understand.
One thing that, when I was with ACO at Alpine, the guys from Snowflake and, I guess, I gather in my counties up there, they're all telling me that they use NACO more than they use CSA.
Really?
Because they're so small, because they're small counties, that CSA really doesn't, you know.
Well, I ran into that with Sullivan too, the minute I was floating the challenge to Clark v. Goddard. And, you know, the, are you familiar with that? That, you know, since he gets most of his money from Pima, Maricopa County.
Right, and so they said that their, I guess that would be.
Back to the golden rule that Tom talked about.
That was like, so it's Jason Lanning, Paul David, there Greenley, Graham, and all that. They said that, this is the group that they work with to really, and they turn to to help with their county issues because why CSA is really, is good, this is who helps them, but I, so I don't know, you know?
They're very active with the Pilt, ensuring that Pilt stays in.
Pilt is a big deal, don't get, I get, I get that, yeah.
And that is also WIR, the Western Interstate Group, is all the Western states, plus Missouri. Don't ask me why. And they, they are like a subgroup of NACO, which represents the western area, and they are so involved in especially public lands because once you get east of the Mississippi, public lands are basically very small.
Yeah, and almost nonexistent.
You come out west and, you know, you're looking at states that have 90% of their problem belongs to the federal government. And so these are, these are big issues for the western states as opposed to.
But it's here too, so what do we got, like 44% of the counties not private, it's public?
Yeah.
So that's, you know.
They just say, yeah, that they use them a lot for forest and public land issues, so. I just think, you know, I just haven't, I'm on the alternative.
I don't have anything good nor bad about NACO, just, I just don't know. And it's, again, it's only three grand, is that?
Yeah, so.
Well, what, I'll try to get along with them, because I'm on there.
They have public health committees, subcommittees, they have a lot of webinars that.
But again, they lobby Congress on certain things.
Absolutely, yeah. I have been on.
So then this is the.
To talk to these people until your head falls off.
And there's a lot of crazy stuff going through Congress, and we would be buried with, in this case, everything that's going on up there.
And sometimes reminding the people that represent our state while we're in Washington or, you know, in Philadelphia is going on right now. It helps a lot to tell them, hey, you know, you're all swept up in the Washington mindset right now, but don't forget about these smaller issues that are, have big impacts to rural communities.
Let me ask you a question, with this, you know, the whole issue, what's happening in rural hospitals and rural health under the bill that was passed, is that something big that NACO does, right? They would get involved with that even?
Yeah, NACO is very, very dynamic, and they're well-regarded as far as the legislature goes, because they.
They represent rural America.
They represent everybody. They have, you have large, you have large communities that are also represented, they're in a different committee. You have the Rural Action Committee that is, and then you also have the Rural and Ag. It is completely separate, but they're part of the same group. I know probably the same people from Rural, from the Rural Action Committee. I, I'm on that as well as Ag and Rural, but a lot of us overlap because obviously a rural area is going to have a lot of agricultural issues. And rural areas, of course, are represented by GRAP in the first place. But you have the large urban caucus also that is another group. I don't run into as many of them for the rural things, but, you know, as far as water issues, that affects whether you're cosmopolitan area or whether you're a rural area.
Jason did tell me that they did help, NACO did help them in Washington on a lot of the forestation issues and stuff, so. I guess it's just about participating.
Mm-hmm. Past supervisors have gone to the Legislative Conference in DC where they can then make office visits to each of our congressional delegation and have a, you know, a packet of talking points that they want to hit. So that's something that NACO supports, and it's kind of the weak of the county.
And ACO actually is very instrumental in setting up those meetings where you actually are meeting with the congressional representatives for.
And the aides. Because that's, when I worked up on ACO, that was always like the key thing, when we got the senior aide, the lower aide, or the aide.
No, we had the real people, John McCain even came to Tombstone to visit me after one of my visits, because, yeah, I've been pretty shy about expressing myself on something. And it was like, hey, hey, I want to talk to that, that little girl from Tombstone. And so, yeah, they actually came blasting down during El Dorado, which was like, oh, dear God, why now? But, yeah, and it was important to them. And we do make connections with people that relate to the area because now they recognize your face. I mean, I haven't done this for quite a while. And, you know, if you choose not to want me to continue with it, that's not completely your decision.
Well, I'd like to get kind of involved in ACO, we decide to go with it. What do you think?
I think, like I said before, if you want to collaborate, cooperate, and coordinate with places with higher populations and higher representation with, with our elected representatives, it's not going to happen. They are going to continue to represent their interests, and they're going to try to get you to sell out.
I can only tell you this, that having worked on the Hill for 10 years and being on the other side, we listened to a lot of the smaller communities and a lot of times favored with them over the big metropolitan areas because they were the ones that were pushing, had a lot of other different avenues to go by, but it was the smaller groups that didn't that we had an open ear to. So being on the other side, I kind of disagree with that, with what you're saying, because.
That people, that people won't sell out?
I'm saying that people, if I, when I worked in Congress on the Hill for Texas and Pat Schroder from Colorado, I listened to the smaller communities, not to the bigger communities that had so-called more power, more support, more money. In fact, we always, in Texas and Colorado, tend to hear out the smaller communities and what they were facing because we knew we had to support them too. So I don't think it's such a sellout, like, you know, if you're, so you're saying because we're smaller, we participate, we're going to sell out to the bigger communities and not be heard?
When you say that they, having.
Who's they?
Well, in any political forces that have more representation, higher population than us, their version of cooperate, collaborate, and coordinate is going to be you do what we want.
No, I disagree with you totally, because I'm in a situation where.
That's where you got to have somebody with some leadership skills sitting in there to be able to push back.
That won't sell out?
Yeah, it won't sell out, yeah. Number one, I never sold out.
I didn't say you did.
And we made changes, and we made big things, so.
I just, I just wanted to bring that point home too, as far as ACO goes. We all know the great state of Maricopa and Pima. They only each have one representative from their county in, on ACO, on the Board, involved in ACO. Because of their massive population, they don't get more people. We all have an equal voice as far as, doesn't matter if it's Graham or Greenley or La Paz, La Paz or La Paz.
Well, Greenley only has 1,000 people, so.
Well, yeah, and, but they have an equal voice in ACO because it is based on one person per county per office is, is a participant. So, just to say on that, okay.
If you can go to the next slide, so then we have CSA and, of course, we, you've, in the six months you've been in office or so, you've, it was a legislative session, so you had plenty of opportunities to interact with the staff and the Executive Director of CSA. Personally, I rely on them a lot for policy analysis and continuing education.
Well, they gave us heads up about the pension issue with corrections officers. They gave us the heads up with all the Altech stuff going on. So I got a lot from them telling us what was going on budget-wise. So, I mean, I just didn't hear a lot from the other guys, that's all, that's what I'm saying, squeaky wheel.
Right, right, they're very responsive to it.
Yeah, so that's, and then, and then I've, I call Sullivan all the time to run ideas by him about, you know, likelihood of success on certain things too, and he gives me feedback on that. So he's been a big help.
And the CSA has their own Legislative Policy Summit, and this year it'll be October 28th through the 30th in Yuma. I do encourage Board members to attend, I would attend as well. And it's a chance all the supervisors in all the counties.
It's a good time to have a meeting in Yuma.
Yeah, they pushed it as late as they could. And you sit down and run in a big room, big conference room, and hammer out different proposals for the organization to support in the next legislative session. So each county kind of comes with their proposals. And then there's breakouts for medium-sized counties, large counties, and small counties. So it's a, it's an important conference, I do encourage that.
So, the three of us are on that, I know. And then Sharon sits on the County Manager, and then I sit on the Legislative Policy Committee. And I've been, I've attended maybe six or seven out of the probably 20 or 30.
They are every Friday.
Yeah, 30 meetings.
During the session, during the session.
And most of it is, I'm not going to blame anybody, but most of it is the lady that runs that from them sends the link out to the meeting like the day before. So when I go in there and I got to go digging through emails, by the time I get in there, it's like half over already. So I talked to Laura, Laura already knows, she's going to try to find the link to help. Because to me, it's like, the, here's, I'm spoiled, so. The 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting, I get this little pop-up on the screen that says your meeting starts in 15 minutes, and then you hit that, and it opens up, and then it says, join the meeting. And you hit join, you hit join the meeting, well, theirs doesn't do that, right? It says 15 minutes, you click on it, it opens the meeting up, and then there's nothing there. Then you got to go, oh crap, then you got to delete all of that, and you got to go scanning through, scanning through emails, it's annoying.
That's how they send it.
Yeah, yeah, so, so they, now, I have Zoom, I have Teams, I have all those magic conference meeting things. You can have a link that's the same link every single time.
So a lot of them do.
I don't know why.
Let's give Bond a go and ask Jen to share.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just, yeah, but anyways, but, but a lot, a lot of the time, I would argue, they're pretty successful in killing stuff that's going to hurt the county. I mean, we did pretty good.
The majority of what ACO, NACO, WIR, CSA, that's what do more than start legislation. Most of the time, we're killing legislation.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, yeah, we effectively killed a lot of, a lot of bad stuff this year. Most of the time, it's voting no.
Next one, of course, is ACO, which, and I would say to Greg Gomez is on.
ACO did a lot to help with us with the Wolf Resolution. They did give us a lot of press, even though, you know, whatever you say about Pasqual and his accent, and he talks a lot. He's very knowledgeable, and when I was up there, he is, I'm telling you, he is. And he worked a lot behind the scenes, he went to that meeting between New Mexico and Arizona. And he also just, you know, he looked at our resolution and said it's really good, and just made a stronger suggestion on reparations and just a little language. So, I mean, he, they also told me they're going to get very much involved into, what is it? I guess it's energy and minerals and mining, and would help with the port of entry and get on board with saying how important the port of entry in the corridor 191 is to their counties, which is true. So anyway, that's my little thing.
And then the Coalition of Arizona and New Mexico Counties, this one, I'll be honest, I don't know much about.
Have you been?
Have you attended any other meetings Supervisor, in general?
No, I have not.
So in the past, Supervisor Judd was on this committee, or this was the representative on this group. And it's made up of five Arizona counties and 11 counties in New Mexico. So similar to ACO, I think, in the concerns. So I just, however, I don't have a strong recommendation either way on this one.
The one thing that I found out from ACO, which was really interesting, is that in the Ag thing, New Mexico's got $5 million in reparations, whether it's drought, Mexican wolf.
From the feds?
From the feds, and you know how much we got? Half a million, not even that, like 560. So Catron, Catron got something like a million and a half. And then I think when they took down the, the different people in Arizona, it was like 500, you know, 200. And when you looked at everyone in Catron, it was like 500,000, you know, 200,000. So if you, with the Ag stuff, that might be something you could be looking into because there is a lot of New Mexico counties and find out how, what are they doing that they get so much, you know, money back from the feds when they're cataloged and doing well?
So Laura, do we, do we get anything from these guys on, on meetings? I don't, I don't remember even seeing anything.
I don't think they do, do they?
They don't have many meetings, but I could.
So what are we paying $2,600 for?
Now, ACO is getting involved, and they were sending, that member Pasqual sent you that whole thing about what Arizona is getting versus what New Mexico is getting.
Yeah, right, 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 on the reparations.
Yeah, on the reparations, so ACO is handling that, they're getting involved.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm kind of leaning, they're on that list, that's, that's the Apache, Coches, Pilgrim, and Navo. I, I don't, I don't know. Do we, do we have to, how do we?
When we.
How do we explore? How do we, how do we eliminate this without violating open meeting law?
When we have the final, we can take your direction, and we'll propose a list in the, in the next meeting, probably in August, for the final approval. And if there, I'm hearing from the Board that you might be interested in taking them off, so I'm going to.
All right, well, let's explore taking this off.
I'm going to run away.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, great, thanks, thanks for coming. Appreciate your insight, we really do.
And we will make sure you get lots more.
Okay, don't forget to get your stuff about Tombstone, and I can announce it.
I, I will get you off the list.
All right.
Send your email before you finish.
So I just don't see any value of this one here personally.
No?
I mean, you've got ACO, you've got that, I got CSA, that's, I don't know what we're going to do with New Mexico.
Yeah.
I mean, where, 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 where does the collaboration result in a fruit, bearing fruit from that? That's, that's what I just don't see.
And ACO, I think a lot of these counties also.
Probably are in ACO, it is.
Right? It seems like this is probably heavily based to New Mexico.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, then Arizona border counties, there's no dues for this, but just want to confirm that Supervisor Gomez.
I have been going. Yeah, and they now are going from helping illegal immigrants to the whole issue of COVID. Now they're on economic development, and they.
Where they should be.
Exactly, is what they said, and then Pima pays for all the bills. They've got a.
Really?
Yeah, we don't pay anything. Yeah, we don't pay anything, but they need all of us to be, they're seen as whatever we do on the border, just gonna funnel it to Tucson. But they have several guys that um, are in economic development, we've had two meetings, and I'm pushing them to really push for Douglas, and they seem to be, you know, wanting to do that.
Okay.
And it's no fees.
Just meetings.
Yeah, just meetings.
And then we have um, Southern Arizona Economic Development Groups, and now we're moving into more economic development versus Legislative Policy um, groups. So, this is the group up in Northern Benson area, George Scott is the director of this, and
That's pretty important.
Supervisor Angenori is our representative.
Yeah, I've been, I've been going to their luncheons. And I've been talking to George, matter of fact, I just sent him an email yesterday.
Yeah, I understand.
So.
That's nothing, no?
150 is nothing.
Arizona-Mexico Commission.
So this.
This is you.
Yeah, this is turning out to be really a big deal. Um, Arizona and Sonora are really getting involved in the high-tech, semiconductors, all that kind of stuff, drones. And they've got a lot of commissions, so I've already talked, I met with Galvez, Senator, State Senator Galvez. She said to say hello, and she's all about medical tourism for the port. Um, her husband sits on the Water Commission of this, I went to their meeting. It's a, it's a huge plus for the port of entry. And it's not that expensive, 250. And I've been working with a lot of the people, and you know, gotta do Port of Authority Board, I mean, there's so much that needs to be done, and, and they, they have a lot of networking. And ag business, you know, Richard Searle sits on that one. Um, and so we were talking about the Screw Arm, and, and it's, it's huge collaborating. And they actually will help us, are helping us. So that we can spend all your money, all our money in Douglas and Sierra Vista, and go to your movies, go to your restaurants, and really contribute to the Sierra Vista, Douglas. There you go.
And next one. Oh, no, there you go. Uh, Arizona Town Hall, um, we can do individual memberships, I think we have ones for Supervisor Angenori.
I think it's me.
Or just.
Yeah, Kathleen's on this.
Right, you know, I mean, so I'm above, so I.
They have a lot of, are you getting notifications about their?
I am getting their town hall.
Okay.
They're, they're kind of like a hodgepodge of all different sectors in Arizona. Businesses and activists and politicians and lawyers and developers and it's like a pretty broad, eclectic.
Yeah, it is very eclectic.
And they study policy issues and try to.
Just worry about them studying the wrong policy issues.
Well, you can go to the event and express that.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, well Kathleen, they do, they do once a year, right? The big Arizona Town Hall is once a year?
They, yeah, they, and they used to come down to Sierra Vista, I haven't seen that in a while, but.
They usually meet like in Sedona or something?
Yeah, I think they have their. They didn't have it on their upcoming events yet.
Yeah, they haven't had it, cuz I was looking, I did, I used, I went one time when I was at the hospital, and they had a huge thing, cuz you know, Wilcox used to be the meth um, capital. And so they had a huge thing on meth, and what defects were going on at Wilcox, which I was shocked, but pretty bad.
But good continuing education too.
So 100 bucks, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, then our PSPRS Local Board, this is just to confirm that Supervisor Angenori will be.
I've been to a couple there. Oh, yes, yes, uh, ask uh, Stacy or whoever it is that should have access to that website, and all, all of the uh, the records like unfunded liabilities for all, all the uh, cities and counties, that we need access to that.
Oh, the, the report, the actuarial report, we can get you that, that's no problem.
Well, we should just have whatever the website is.
Yeah.
I used to be able to get on it, I haven't got, got on it.
You do have to search for it a little bit in the website, it's not like an easy clicks link, so we can send that to you.
Okay.
But I can access it without logging into anything, so.
Is that trusty?
Uh, the other, the other thing that is a, along those lines is all the, all the past resolutions are cataloged somewhere or another, and it's one of those things, oh yeah, we're working on that, we're gonna get that fixed. It's not fixed yet? It's not fixed yet. There is a lot of them available on base, but you're talking about the uh, MSS project we're working on, uh, data, data wise, Cochise County data wise, where we're trying to make sure it's all accessible. All past resolutions.
That's pretty good, it's low, isn't it?
Yeah, overheads usually was 13.
Neil shows, he can show you how to search one.
Yeah, but that's, that's, they got people that do all the processing stuff, so that that comes, that comes out of the, the payments into the system.
Okay.
Like a fund manager.
Okay.
You know, like a Merrill Lynch.
Okay.
Now, just so happens Benson and Wilcox, their PSPRS, they have been very responsible. Yeah. And, and they're not upside down like some cities.
Well, Bisbee I know is one.
Yeah.
Is Douglas, I don't know.
Douglas got a bond, got a bond.
They, they were upside down till they got a bond, and now they've, now their, their great grandchildren are gonna pay it off.
Uh, CCAP is another group that is no cost to us, they ask for a local representative, for an elected official to represent uh, Cochise County on their board. I don't think they've had any board meetings since late in CCAP Southeast Arizona Community Action Program. Um, their meetings are in Safford, and they are more social services directed with pushing opportunities and aid to families to achieve self-sufficiency, so. More of a social services group, but they just have to be.
I was gonna say.
I think you were on it because of District 3's location, you know?
Judd asked me to be on it, and I said I couldn't be.
But they're not that active.
They're not, but they had a meeting in Tucson, I think it was right, I don't even think I was, I was elected but not sworn in, and I was like, well, I'm not gonna do that, but yeah, it's all me.
It brings up a, a something fundamental to us is, do we want bigger government, or do we want smaller government? And if there's associations that do nothing but want bigger government, that's not us. Yeah, and that's, that's, that's why it probably would be a good fit.
Would you like us to change it to Supervisor Gomez?
I'm already doing that, I'm a welcome.
I, I mean.
Now I have a representative.
I don't, I don't think we need to send anybody to this, that's just me. Not that I'm voting.
Yeah.
I'm not voting either, but, but just maybe put it on the agenda for exploration, exploration.
Further discussion. Um, then we have CEGO, Southeast Arizona Governments Association, they have a variety of programs on this. In this case, I'm focusing on our connection to them for Transportation Improvement Program and um, funneling money through the Federal Highways Administration down to ADOT, down to CEGO. Um, it's important for the county to stay involved and to pay that it is a federal uh, law for the county to be a participant in CEGO and in the Sierra Vista MPO, they're just two different sides of the county.
What do you mean?
So CEGO handles the um, Transportation Improvement Program for Douglas, Bisbee, Wilcox, Benson, parts of the county.
They're all part two in, in helping fund the bus services, you know, that get people to like to college, or get people to the hospitals and the clinics, and just basically transportation in the community. I know Douglas uses it, Bisbee uses it, yeah, but both of them have really good bus service, which is really important.
For our road improvement programs, um, so there's a Board of Directors that a board member can sit on, which is the Executive Committee that Supervisor Gomez sits on, and then we have a Technical Committee on CEGO that is made up of engineering staff to, along with other counties, um, and they discuss, so the board handles discussions of how to handle the funds, what funds go to which county, and what projects are on the, on the list, and then the staff part of it works through how to get those projects accomplished.
So some people are elected and some people are not?
No, they're all.
Well, the people who make the decisions, I would say, are the elected. Um, the people who implement those decisions are the staff.
And this is for several different counties?
Yes, this is for um, well, it's for.
Greenlee?
Yes, Cochise, which includes Benson, Bisbee, Douglas, Wachita City, Sierra Vista, Tombstone, Wilcox, and Graham County, and their cities, and then Greenlee County and the cities, Santa Cruz County and the city.
Okay, so what were you gonna say about MP, at the MPO or?
So that's the next one, so similar to CEGO, the MPO is um, Metropolitan Planning and Reservation for Transportation Improvements and Issues, so you've got your.
Yeah, I've sat on these, uh, I've been to almost, I think I missed one meeting, I've been to almost all, uh, either by Zoom or in person. Um, it, it's heavily, as the name implies, Sierra Vista oriented, and it's about uh, you know, getting ADOT money, uh, and other transportation funds.
And then.
And it's just, I'm sorry, let me ask a question, is this Sierra Vista because?
It's just, it's the greater Sierra.
So then.
It's, it's, like, so everybody on it is like, except for me and, and Searle, are Sierra Vista, pretty much, right?
So why did it take so long for this board to get that, that, you know, uh, outside, the road outside of Frye's fixed?
Oh, the 90, that, that was.
That was state?
They were lobbying hard for it, I know.
Really?
And, and it was just getting it in the queue, well, what happened was, was it three years ago, the Biden took the uh, federal highway dollar allotment and gave it to Pete Buttigieg to go build uh, electric cars, electric car chargers.
Like the ones that are gonna be built here?
Yeah, we lost like 110 million dollars for the state, came out of that federal highway budget, and that resulted in ADOT having to reprogram a lot of their road construction and repair projects, because a lot of that federal highway dollars got diverted, and that was a big, big, big stink back then, yeah. I'd like to talk about expediency, expediency, profound comments about expediency. And one of them is, the city council drew the original boundary of the MPO outside the city limits, which I said, they do not have the authority to do. And that was to uh, to get the uh, population of the fort, and they also drew it south of town, Wachita City didn't wanna do it at that time. Uh, so it's, it's, in, in that case, it was the city council saying, okay, it's expedient for us to do this, because we can get free money from this. But they also, by, by claiming the, the population on the fort, they're saying, okay, the fort's within the city limits supposedly. But the, it, the, the point I made at that time is, well, the fort doesn't have to pay 4% on their electricity, so why is that? So i- it, it's a matter of expedience, and they're just doing, well, in this case, we're gonna talk out of this side of our mouth, and um, that's the way we're gonna talk on the other side of the mouth, but wait, I have more. Oh, you have more, I don't see them, well, go ahead. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so... Turning the page. So I said, okay, this, this is anti-business, because uh, more tax-funded transportation is of ben, is not a benefit to sub, shuttle operators who will have to face the additional competition from the government. So it, it, if perhaps for uh. Do they do that? My friend, yeah, well, they, it, that was, that was one effect of the MPO, whatever it is, it's, it's a subsidy. It's a subsidy that you wouldn't have otherwise, okay? And I think they're spending it on biodiesel fuel and buses that run on biodiesel fuel, and who knows what? So. I haven't seen one yet. Once the area is addicted to another subsidy, it will become even more difficult for future, future officials to turn away that subsidy, because who turns away subsidies? Except me. I would, I would agree with you on that, it's just that I haven't seen it. I, I mean, and I've been, uh, I, I think I missed like one meeting that they've had, cuz they meet every month, and I, I only miss one, and every time they're in there, they're talking about road construction and. And, but it's a subsidy. Widening. It's a subsidy, right? It's a subsidy, it's coming in, it's free money. We, we, we joined this MPO, we get this free money out, out of them, and we go, well, we don't wanna give away the free money. A lot of money. Well, it doesn't matter, whatever it is, and you still got the board that you are a member of, presumably, you and Searle, okay? And, and as I, as, i- if we say, okay, the United States shall guarantee to every state in the Union a republican form of government, which means elective representation, and you were not elected to that. No, I, I got you, but they don't, they, they don't implement any will on the people, all right? What they do is they basically say, like, they, they, they coordinate planning projects, is all I've seen so far on that board, they haven't done anything with biodiesel or. Okay. I would have gotten, I would have gotten a little interesting about. Okay, another thing, because it, it, it comes from federal money.
No.
Does it not?
Federal Highways Administration.
Yeah, yeah. The debt goes through ADOT, though, yeah, it doesn't come to these guys, they don't get, they don't get the money, what they. Okay, it comes from the federal government. Right. To ADOT. Right. Okay, and because it comes, it originates with, with federal money, it's gonna have federal regulations on it, like. Yeah. Like.
But you know, Tom.
Affirmative action.
You pay taxes to have some kind of um, you know, government to oversee our highways, oversee our roads, and that's why we're elected on a local, on a local sense, because we make sure that those monies are gonna be used correctly. If we don't use them, and I know a lot of the constitutional conservatives say, well, we shouldn't have any of that, but somebody else will, it's still, unless you go and change it at the top, you gotta work from the bottom up, and you gotta make sure that you're representing what you pe, what the citizens get from the federal government, and that's where you come into play. To make sure that these things don't go awry, to be a voice, that it goes in the right direction, until you get rid of taxes altogether, which, that's an utopia, it's a matter of keeping them low and making sure they're being used wisely, and that's what your role is, I believe. Not to not go, not to not participate, not to say, oh, we're just not gonna be at the table, I think that's a mistake.
Well, I mean. Totality of the circumstances. Yeah, it's, it's just, again, have, ADOT goes there, you, you have these discussions with them, they tell you what's going on, and then they hear what you're asking for, it's just, and Searle's there, right? Searle's got a lot of influence, cuz he's on the governor's Transportation Board, and then you have Castleman from ADOT comes down, and he sits there, and his mother was my admin when I was State Center.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so that, you have, you have the ability to, it's, it's gaining access to information to understand what's going on, you get budget insight from ADOT, you get project priority insight from ADOT, and then you find out what the city's pushing for, so when you sit there, cuz you know, the mayor sits on it too, he's at the, at the meetings, and you know where he's, he's pushing for, and then of course, he's looking for us, you know, for the roads that aren't in the city that are part of this, to, you know, look at what's our plan for fixing these roads or that roads. It's more of a, a, you know, outlining the infrastructure for the growth of Sierra Vista and the county in that general area, that's really all it is. So it's okay if the funds come through and they have stipulations to say, you have to follow affirmative action? The funds come through a government, they don't come through this group, this group doesn't control the funds. So read the fine print, see what it says next time, one of these things, no matter i- it, whether it's uh, the Health Department grants, read the fine print, see what it says in it. When they, when they, what do you say? Because what I'm saying is, when, when I was involved in this in 2013, it had affirmative action requirements, because it was federally, federally funded.
If you were at the table, they'd be like, fight that, that's how you fight it.
This is federally funded? The MPO is a, well, that, that's what it was in 2013 when it was implemented, and it was, it was forced upon, in my opinion, forced on Sierra Vista by the governor who didn't have the authority to do it anyway. So, but anyway, that's what, I'm just getting the point across, expedience versus what's right and what's wrong. What is constitutional?
That's true, but at the same time, if you not at the table, you don't know.
They didn't have any authority to do that, though, that's why, they, these guys, that Sierra's a metropolitan. Well, they didn't have the authority to draw a boundary of the thing to outside the city limits. What is it? Well, they did it anyway, i- i- if they do whatever it is anyway, then, then here we are, you know, 12 years later, or something like that, saying, how did this happen?
Were you at the table, I mean, were you?
I was on the city council at the time. Yeah, well, I mean, I'm, I've been to, like I said, to every one of these, with the exception of one, I think I missed one, but, but I mean, they're. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad, that so far you haven't seen, okay, if you. I haven't seen any of that. You have to implement smog tests, that's what I foresaw back then, but you still got, you got other, other stuff, like biodiesel fuel and whatever it is, that, that was free money for that, and I don't know, I think that it came from the MPO, but I can't swear to you. What, the board? No, I was on the city council. Oh, okay. Because.
Because, I don't know, maybe the very fact that I'm there.
Maybe, that's why you need to.
No, they just haven't, they haven't become.
They haven't brought any of that stuff up. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I just haven't seen it. I mean, it's just, it's just a way to engage. And since I.
I guess, what I'm trying to say is, read the fine print.
No, I.
Don't just say, oh, free money, grab the free money. No, see what they're, what's there?
It's not, it's not that. It's just trying to coordinate with ADOT, the county and the city on infrastructure planning.
It doesn't have to go through that at all. It could be, whatever, whatever counties and cities that it is, that it is going to, could be divided up by the legislature, whoever administers it at the top. And, and you wouldn't be creating a new geographical, political area.
Well, maybe what you need to do then is by being able to go to the top and say, it should be divided, this would be a mechanism to do that.
But her revenue's already divided that way.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and miss.
So there's, there is, um, federal law and a code of federal regulations that dictates how this MPO is run. So that highway, federal highways transportation money goes to ADOT, ADOT sends it down to the MPO. When the MPO sends to ADOT the plans, how it's gonna be used. This is my general understanding, very Cliff Notes version. So that CFR says that a, that a population area, fifty thousand, has to have an MPO.
Sierra Vista didn't, and they, they drew their line big enough to get that.
MPO can be outside of a city limit, so it includes Wachukah City in the population.
Just like the RTA, it floats it into its list.
It's in the code of federal regulations, so it's, the governor approved those lines.
Well, it's just like the RTA. It's just like the RTA, right? Tucson, the RTA is Tucson plus a large section of Pima County, and then you have PAG, right? The Pima Association of Governments. You have all these hyper, hybrid government entities, but they, but they all have elected officials that sit on it.
They're not elected to those boards.
You're elected to serve on the five or two of your elected.
But I get, I get it, Tom. It's just, it's just, I get what you're saying. It's just, I, I haven't seen anything malicious or sneaky.
What you got?
Out of this.
Or, or it talks about elected officials being part of the board.
Yeah.
They still weren't, but, so it's still unconstitutional, you know? In my opinion.
I.
Violates Article Four, Section Four.
I keep insisting.
Well, I mean, it could, it could be so, well, we're talking about.
To me, to me, it's, it's informational because I know what the city's up to, what they're planning, what they're looking at doing. And again, if I see something that throws a red flag, you know me, I'll say it. I'd say, this sounds kind of flaky. I haven't seen any of that so far. Right now, it's just trying, trying to coordinate with us and the state on where to, where, and then growth is related to that, which I'm a big fan of. Growth is key to what we're trying to do here, right? So they're trying to talk about where they want to put the infrastructure to, to facilitate growth. So that is good to know and coordinate with them because a lot of that, and eventually they will annex. And that's the purview of them if they want to go do that. But as they grow out into the county, they're gonna want to annex more of that, that land into the city. But that's fine as long as they're growing. I have no heartburn at all. So that's all that.
Just pointed out, just pointed out, read the fine print, just like, you know, Joe showed me the, uh, the CFRs.
I haven't seen anything that they floated so far.
I understand.
And maybe it's, maybe it's because I go to the meetings and I sit on the Zoom calls and they're like, very cautious about what they say.
Depends on, you know, it just depends on what comes down the pike and what kind of funding is gonna be there and so on.
But I mean, the two, the two, the two guys that sit on that, that I would say would be the most influential are me and the mayor. And there's, one, the gal that runs it is, the chair is actually a city council member. I forgot her name.
Might be Carolyn?
Yeah, she, she's a councilman in Sierra Vista, but, but me and the mayor are one, but.
Yeah, so you're like the watchdog.
Yeah, 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 that's all I'm saying. I, I haven't seen anything sneaky coming out of these guys. I mean, they're just talking about, most of the discussion is with ADOT. Right? And, and, and getting the roads coming in out of the city done. And then again, with us, with the county, is growth. They want to be able to expand out and, you know, they want to plan growth all the way up to the Wachukah Boundary. They want to start filling in, uh, as much as they can, uh, going that way. They also want to go south. You know, and there's not a lot of attention south of Sierra Vista, right, going out that way, you know? So they want to start looking at that stuff, so.
Okay, so affirmative action is okay.
I haven't seen affirmative action.
You haven't looked? Look at the Reds. It's probably in what Joe.
No, but I mean, with affirmative action, it's like.
What would that be? Burying rogue people?
It doesn't have it.
I don't know.
There it isn't.
No, I get what you're.
Haven't looked, haven't looked for 2013.
Maybe we should look into it and get rid of it. This would be a place to do it. I mean, you know what I'm saying is you have to be part, a part at the table to be able to change policy.
I mean, and, and it's just good, it's good for planning, for growth, growth planning and, and infrastructure planning. That's the only thing I've seen so far there.
Well, if you read the fine print of all these grants, you're gonna find the same boilerplate stuff and it's gonna say, you, you gotta have a NEPA clearance, you gotta have this, you gotta have that, you gotta have.
Well, yeah, that's.
Some kind of form of a.
That's gonna be there, but I mean, I don't.
Can you go to the next?
NEPA is the thing, but I, I haven't seen it. I just, I hate the logo, but that's another story.
So, so moving on, we have the Wolf Resolution is, is, uh, we're bumping into that.
Like.
Yeah, so let's keep on over. So I'm gonna move through these next ones kind of fast.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Uh, Wachukah Fifty, this is, we have a, um, IGA or MU, I'm not sure which.
Yeah, and I've been to a couple of them. I missed probably half.
For them to.
I'm probably fifty percent on that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
A lobbyist who pursue or react.
Same issue with the link on those guys. Laura's gonna, Laura's gonna take care of that. But I was having the same link issue, um.
And then, next slide. Um, the Defense, Association of Defense Communities, I'm not sure, Supervisor Antinori, if you've had any communication or experience with them outside my realm.
Uh, I've had nothing with these guys and quite, quite frankly, I don't know if it's any value at all either. This is another four hundred and fifty bucks we could probably look to get rid of.
Okay.
I mean, all of this stuff that relates to this is.
Is on Wachukah Fifty, wasn't it?
Well, Wachukah Fifty and Nigalan and Siskimani.
Yeah.
We, you know, dealing with, and that's what we, we're trying to set up a phone call regarding the fort and the water stuff, the three of us anyways, you know, so, so. I don't know what this does, so I don't, I don't see it, you know. Let's put this in the consideration.
Okay.
Discussion too.
And then these, um, the last two are the, are related to the water, uh, issues surrounding, uh, or the water mitigation efforts surrounding Fort Wachukah and different, um, policy efforts related to supporting Fort Wachukah. That's the CCRN, which you've heard about.
We don't pay anything for this though.
Nothing.
Tom, tell us about those meetings, absolutely.
Through flood control district projects is on.
No.
You don't go.
Wasn't elected to it, but anyway.
Yeah, but you.
I know about it. Okay, let me, let me just, can I have some slides? And, and we'll just say, I'm gonna say that all of these CCRN, Upper San Pedro Partnership and Water District are all the same people doing all the same thing, which is gain control of the water. Okay, so I've given you this right here, and I'm just gonna read a couple stipulations here. And this is from the 2010 attempt to establish a water district. More pumped out than nature can replenish, talking about water, this says, Defense Authorization Act, yada, yada, which endangered species act applies to the fort. Reduce the overdraft and restore and maintain the regional groundwater aquifer in this Sierra Vista sub, sub watershed. And I am, we cannot do what is impossible, which is restore and maintain the regional groundwater aquifer. We're not gonna replenish the aquifer. Uh, so I got this map over here and you'll notice that, like I've said many times, you gotta watch out for whenever they try to draw a district, they're trying to implement this district, even though, well, in, in this map, they show it going into Pima County and Santa Cruz County over on the west side of that. And I think that of particular interest is a tiny divot below Highway eighty-two, which I believe to be a place where they had, uh, they were pumping across, pumping water out of the aquifer. And I'll talk about the, uh, the grandfather clause. Okay, so what do we got here? That's, uh, what, what's, um. Okay, let's take a look down here. This is, this is also, uh, after the failed election in, in 2010. This is a former, uh, board supervisor person. And she strongly believes there should be another opportunity for the voters to have a chance to vote on the water district. Okay, even after it failed, she wanted to do it again, okay? And, and Pat Gall is, is quoted the same way. He wanted to do the water district vote again. And he ended up wanting to do it statewide. I'm sure that I've sent, uh, both of you copies of, of an article from the paper talking about a statewide water augmentation authority, okay? So what I'm trying to say is, we got to fight to protect our water, to keep it getting, to export it out of here. And whether it's the state or the feds, they're, they're all gonna try to control the water that's in the San Pedro River. So, let's see what else I got. Uh, how about another slide? Any of them, let's see. Okay, let's, let's take a look at, what is this? Okay, a million dollars, and we're actually five million dollars going into the Upper San Pedro Partnership between two thousand and twenty-ten. It, it's just, just criminal, in my opinion. Uh, let's take a look at the bottom of this column, at the, yeah. And so you've got the five million dollars there. How about another slide? What's on the bottom, where, where this little menu thing is? Okay, almost a million dollars and this is Sierra Vista, okay? So I think, uh, I'm surprised it was that little, but it's the same group of people trying to do the same thing. They're not gonna quit. And the only answer is not collaboration, cooperation, coordination, but to fight it.
Yeah, I'm, on this one, I'm, I'm thinking I'm with, with Tom on it because I'm not a big fan of the sprinkling either. Or the attention that that.
And it hurts the fort, it's always hurt the fort.
Yeah, and I do, it does hurt the fort. And I think, I think it gives the environmentalists a platform and they're able to get in.
And you're paying them, you're feeding them.
Let me ask you, because the fort and the mayor and Sierra Vista feels that it's very important to keep the fort open to have it, right?
I think, I think it's because you gotta, it, it's, it's the, the federal government, BLM, versus the federal government, US Army in mortal battle. Does that make sense?
And then the. Now that I've seen the Ham Day thing, I'm even more irritated.
The, uh, the point is, does the sprinkling exist? And, and here it is, it's the same, the same.
I don't think.
Uh, issue. Well, it, it's expedient for us to say that it exists because we get all this free money and they've been getting free money from, from us, from the county for, for all kinds of time. You saw that, all that money coming out of the city. It started out with, uh, with ten million, to, to implement it, and, uh, let's see. The, my point, environmentalists never fight for greater liberty or less control. Non-elected governing entities are their best hope, and that is the.
This, this all goes back to Colby, long time.
And Kyle.
And, and Kyle, yeah. You know, and this is.
So the, the Upper San Pedro Partnership is not as active as it used to be as a policymaking group. It's, it's turning more, it's mostly funded through Fort Wachukah. Uh, we do have the, uh, IGA with the city of Sierra Vista to provide ten thousand in funding.
Yeah, I, I.
For that Upper.
I also think we need to pull out of that IGA too.
And that we can put on an agenda.
Yeah.
And continue to push back against, uh.
Yeah.
The whole sprinkling.
So, so the Cochise Conservation Recharge Network, Upper San Pedro Partnership Executive Committee and the Upper San Pedro Partnership Advisory Commission, I would put that on the agenda.
Furthermore, the trend is to bypass our state legislature. Why would that be? Because of the Constitution. It says, the only way the federal government gets more land is by cession, in other words, giving it away, or by sale. A particular state and accepted by Congress become the ceded government case like Washington DC.
They've turned it into like a national park down there. They got signs all over.
Territory.
They won't let you go in there, you know, so.
It's reverted to territory.
Yeah, so I, I got heartburn with the way that all went down myself as well.
Okay, it says, purchased by consent of the legislature of the state in which the same shall be for the erection of forts. We got one of those, magazines, arsenals, dockyards and other need, needful buildings. That is a constitution of the United States of America. And it says, how does the federal government get state land? That's how. And that's the only.
But the whole establishment of it is called into question the way that that went down too. It was no real, it wasn't done properly.
Precisely.
So, that's my heartburn. So I'm with Tom, obviously.
Voting up.
But we're not voting.
Yeah.
We're not voting. It's gonna be on the agenda, Miss, uh.
I would just clarify, the CCRN is not a, um, we don't pay dues for that. That's the projects that the, that the, um, flood control districts puts forth. So instead of saying a vote on CCRN, I would say it's more a vote on flood control district projects as they come forward.
And that's, that's why I said this is, it's, it's all the same. I mean, I mean, it, it, it's all, it's all related, let me put it.
Yeah, future, future flood control, we've already discussed, when we have our future flood control board meetings, we're gonna, we're gonna steer that in a different direction too.
We also need to, in my opinion, revisit the Bisbee affluent project, which was voted on. I can't remember. Go back to that and say, no, we're not doing that.
How much money sunk into that already?
Sorry.
Other, but we'll have that.
For you next week.
Yeah, but anyways, I, I think put those, all three of those on, the, the CCRN, USPP Executive and USPP Partnership. Discussion at the next meeting. All right, is that it?
That's it.
Then we now get into Wolf.
Yep.
All right. All right, where's our lawyer? I need him.
I'm gonna go, I said.
Oh, is he, is he?
Did he do adjourn this one though?
There he is.
No, it's not exactly.
Uh, Frank, 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 you have Frank. You have to stop the meeting. You have to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. All right, so let's, uh, adjourn. The next meeting will be the Wolf Resolution Work Session to discuss amendments and changes to the Wolf, uh, resolution. Uh, that will be immediately following this meeting. So we're adjourned. All right.